The afternoon meeting, City Council, Henderson, Minnesota. Wednesday, March 18th, 2022 is called to order. First order of business will be the minutes for the February 16th meeting. Are there additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion made, executive. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your first request to appear before the council.
Charlie's not gonna be here, but he's got a couple of proposals. Will carry him down for quite a few years, 16 I think.
Richard's better, often.
I'm ready to wait for it.
Yeah.
Have a little time with that. Do you want to do it?
Oh, I don't know.
They're pretty similar. Some are lower Jerrys and some are lower Charles. Which area are you looking at?
How are we...
And are we gonna continue having Bruce move the items like the sliding handle?
I mean, how are they supposed to play? We on the way through the work ethic part from the back?
Right.
Well, I've always received very positive comments about our current line.
I have too.
Yeah, I have too. So I think I'd make a motion to just go to leave Jerry in place.
I second that.
Motion made, Jerry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good with it, Jerry. That's all you need.
I appreciate it. Sorry. Just, I don't know if it's okay for me to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Lana has kept me doing some cleaning now as well. And I spoke with that party. She's been doing some of that and she's said that she's gonna be helping getting the bathrooms cleaned as long as that's something that you're wanting her to do.
Yes.
So probably with getting people over here to keep the bathrooms cleaned and what else? She wants to do that, so we should be able to accomplish that for you guys. But we'll work on that once the park opens up. She also, actually for my, just for my part, I kinda hope maybe we can maybe secure the bathrooms better so that we just allow the campers to use them. I'm not sure if that's possible, but that's just a recommendation. If we can maybe just get a keypad door lock for them so that only the camper people can use them. I'm not sure if you guys thought about that or if it's possible. It would help. Probably maintain some stability in those bathrooms because there's quite a few people that come from other areas and use those bathrooms and may not do a nice job of picking it up for themselves.
But we have to allow the bathrooms for people playing at the playground and...
Yeah, and whatever, you know, may not be possible, just to make sure.
I think the way it'll work, if we get far enough along and pass this rail back there, and we do that, is they'll actually be, I think you've got plans to have like satellites up there, right?
For the, for the follow-up. Yeah, there'd be a pad with satellites on it. Yeah. So. I would sell that phone.
Yeah, and hopefully we can get, we can get to that and do whatever, you know. If everything went well on that task this fall, I would have, you know, we'd probably package some grants in the spring, but, you know, hopefully by the end of 2023, have some planning placed and, you know, start building up there, have it done in 24.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, while you bring it up, I mean, Beth has been, she's not president this year, but President of the Lions and stuff too. She's semi taken over for Ron down at Park, or down at Vander Park, so, you know. I think we'll eventually be able to make that a natural transition down there as well. My big difference is too, I guess Jerry himself isn't doing any of this stuff, but I mean, he's contracting out with somebody, he's got the insurance for paying the owner of the rent, you know, we're doing whatever and, you know, ideally to me that's the way you wanna keep, keep doing it and, you know, like that building, the Lions, all that, I wanna, I could wanna take some kind of ownership, but on the other side, you're never gonna get, well, I shouldn't say never, but it's highly likely that you're gonna get somebody that's been doing 60 years of life, you know, to do, to doing that stuff and doing it in a high quality there. So I'm making sure of stuff. Right now I have any, I would never agree with going down and inspecting the city before. If, if, if it makes something that's defiant, you know, whatever.
All right. Then we will move on.
Flumming Rachel, don't be sure if it's gonna be here now or not. She provided 60% plans, so those are, those are here. Jason has made some headway in negotiating our St. Louis Hall of Agreement. He thinks next week he'll actually be able to talk to some river state people at the state level and get that done, so I don't know if he's ready to go over or not, but at one point, we were, our plans and the state's plans, when they were at 25% level, were all the same. I mean, now we're over at, this is the 60% plan, and I think she said the states are between 30 and 35, so it's, you know, now she's got to wait a little bit. She's still going ahead and submitting some things, but there might be some stuff that is gonna be able to get approved because the state's not quite as far along yet in their state kind of plans. So again.
All right, Chris, what do you got?
What I have for you today is the Henderson Trail Master Plan. This is put together by Mark Nolan, one of our planners, and Karen Lueberg, one of our landscape architects. So this is a document we've been working on for the last few months, kinda off and on. Goes through the existing trail system for town sidewalks. When I say trails, I also refer to sidewalks and some on-street facilities as well, kinda outlining how some of those can be all connected into each other, along with looking at regional trails going in and out of the town. So most of those regional trails going north, west, and east. Not gonna say go through the whole report here directly with you, hopefully we've had time to kinda go through it, but this is largely to look at how the trail system could work through town and with the, I guess I'm not 100% sure of the trail status on the county road going north of town, but that's kinda what spurred this thing on for, for the city as well. So we are looking at areas for trailheads. Allison's Park, as mentioned earlier, would be one of those, one of those potential trailheads as well, and along with the upgrade to the existing trailhead on the north side of town along the county road. So I'm mostly here to answer questions that you might have here today, hopefully kinda go through it and kind of get your first thoughts on this.
I wonder if you look at the Allison Park, which was in the end, I mean, Keith had testified at a hearing last week in front of the House, and they had all this information, and we were totally asking the question, so must've been, must've been detailed enough.
You were straight to the point. That's good.
Yeah, I think they understood what we were talking about. There was no problem with our, with what we were intending to do and how we were justifying it, so.
So you had your meeting with the tax committee and all that?
We had with the House, kind of, yeah.
Okay.
And we were just planning on using this, but just as another sidebar, this came in, I mean, it was draft, and then when Mark sent this in, I don't know, whatever, probably this Friday, I forwarded it to Jeff and Jeff Thomas, who are working on that, other refill plan, and then they submitted an ENR grant application like that Friday, so they actually used this, and they got some, Doug reported last night at the trail meeting that he got some feedback. I think, you know, some of those people kind of miss, they don't necessarily follow all the different trails that we got going on even on Henderson, but they read, they read this, and I think they took that as part of all the regional trail things to operate, and a lot of stuff that was in here answered most of their, it's in part of that plan, but it seemed like, we dug, talked, and answered a bunch of their questions, and it seemed like whoever was reviewing it, that we had, that we were planning and we're doing stuff and we're hitting the right, hitting the right notes in this, so we said, well, we must've read it because they asked questions every year, and I doubt it even read this here, you know, so. So I think it's why, I mean, it's sort of the purpose we need right now, and, I mean, Chris came in to do the estimates, but basically I worked with Mark and Karen and asking for changes with Karen, she was just right on top of it, I mean, if we have stuff, we'd have a meeting somewhere like at 4:00 and they tell her at 8:00 in the morning, we need something for this or whatever, she takes, takes the changes and, you know, and do whatever, so it's been, it's been real good.
I have a question on figure three, page six.
Sure.
Okay, so I see that there's new pedestrian bridges. So one is Allison's Park as you go down that hillside.
Yes.
And then one would be on the trail up here. Where's that third bridge on the very...
We're actually showing two of them off of the north side at, I think it's A Street. So those we got in the off-road portion of it, and at this point, I mean, I certainly haven't had a structural engineer review or anything, it's just a ballpark, what could it cost but a bridge?
Okay.
We know a bridge would be needed at those locations, so Allison's Park would be one of them, and then two on that off, or unpaved trail, I guess I should call it that. So that'd be more of a gravel surface trail.
And then it'll connect to the levee on the north end?
Yeah, so we have it kinda wrapping around on Locust Street, I think.
Now, although it connects to the levee, it'll probably connect to the regional trail now.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's the trail that kinda goes behind that area now, but this, we're kinda showing more sidewalks instead. Most of the improvements within town are primarily to sidewalks. We do show improvements at crosswalks as well. A lot of those are on state highway or county roads, so the assumption would be that the county or MINDAT would take on those costs, and so I did not have those costs necessarily reflected into this cost estimate you see in the, in the report. So we're more concentrating on the city streets, and some of this area is in the area identified for futures, water in the street and sewer improvements, so hopefully it's gonna have a conjunction.
It's not homeowners that would have to pay for the sidewalk?
That's me, you don't, at least since I've been here the last few years, you haven't assessed for those improvements, so the assumption would be that maybe going to taxes at this point. You know, there are some things that you can look into as well, State or else's school, one of those kind of programs that isn't as looked at to pay for these type of things, and, you know, there's a school in that area, so, in a couple of these areas, so perhaps that means there's some of these sidewalk improvements. We do identify a couple of costs for some what are called RRFBs, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, so those are enhanced crosswalks that flash at people when the people are trying to use them. They usually have a push button or microwave admitting, but we have costs in there and you can decide whether or not you wanna proceed with it. So everything we have right now is pretty high-level cost estimating with a little extra contingency in there, but we do have some cost estimates for at least the cost that the, the city would be incurring to complete most of these improvements we've identified.
If you're really okay, it'd be okay if probably you move the stuff under your order?
All right. I'll do that. I'm moving the stuff to record. Second. Motion made, executive. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made, executive.
Solid. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And I see the snow is probably about 90% gone, but if you wanna do a punchless walk-through for the next one to two months on the previous street project, we can start talking about that too, so just letting it out of the works for you, and let the, let the snow melt completely before we worry about that, I guess.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
One more thing, like who's checking into those poles? I forgot.
Oh, they still, we've been, we've been with them many times, and they just kept saying they're doing it.
Well, the only thing I would think is, the only reason we ever got anything moved was we declared it an emergency. I think I'm gonna have to do it again.
I'll walk through, run through.
Yeah, I can check into them again, but as far as I...
This is Frontier.
Or we'll get the cell on the bell.
They do, they will never get to it unless it's a health safety issue, because they just are on the verge of...
So I did have a conversation with them, probably mid-summer, and said that they were a safety issue as far as the fire department was concerned, and they assured me they were coming out that next week.
And then you say somebody didn't show up, and nobody showed up again?
Yeah.
Maybe we need to make that whole call again.
Appreciate it.
And stress the safety thing again.
Yeah.
I can't even finish the old sidewalk, because it left here.
Right.
Do you see, I mean, this Frontier, did he actually ask care after, rather than somebody that comes out maybe, I mean, do they...
I think, I think they are, they are so close to the end that they, they don't, they would have to probably...
Because all their other work that they get permits for is all time back to town.
Yeah, yeah.
He might, he might get an inspector if somebody comes out, but I don't think they...
And that's what it was, I think, an inspector that came out.
They'll have to hire somebody.
Basically, they don't, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't straight out.
But we can't touch it, you know? We can't do it ourselves. We're stopped down. We could cut it down.
I think there's still stuff on it, isn't there?
What's that?
There's still wires connected to it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there are actually XL poles that they can't move until Frontier moves their lines.
Well, XL's got a new pole, and besides, they just need to cut off XL's.
Yeah. Which is rotting out the bottom. I'll send that one right out, I'll check under myself again, but. Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
All right, please, chief, report. Did I... Did I print that wrong, man?
You forgot what I said.
No, 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 it's, I just, I just didn't, I forgot it. So anyway, it's gonna be from February 15th to March 14th. So we handled 95 calls for service. Two missing charges forwarded to the city attorney's office. One report forwarded to state investigation division. The department conducted three criminal investigations. During that time, we issued eight traffic citations for 10 different violations, and breakdowns as such, one domestic, one school-related, one child protection, one juvenile, one scam, one traffic accident report, one noise complaint, five suspicious activity, 28 traffic stops, one driving complaint, one animal complaint. And we had 38 community policing direct patrol, six welfare checks, public assist, six ordinance violation, one criminal trespass. Personnel is the same, up to date as far as training goes. We've got 36 miles, 36, 110 miles on the main unit, and 81, 679 on the other unit, and we're all up to date on post NBCA requirements. Looks like, any questions, concerns? Well, good.
What I can act about that vehicles, we have an ordinance that needs to be followed, or isn't it?
No, I'm handling it, I can answer that question. That was actually one that I reported, I sent to the state. That's, we, we're gonna go, state, state's gonna be investigating, I have a investigating division that would be investigating that issue, so.
You got a property before being carried over?
Well, I'm not just talking about that, I'm talking about, with all the junk and using vehicles for storage and stuff like that.
Oh, well, we don't have ordinance as far as how many vehicles you can have, and again, there is ordinance that stipulates the vehicle has to be a junk vehicle, I mean, it's like a cog or something vehicle, so.
Yeah, so there's other, there's other ways we can, could have a couple of those guys.
So we have ordinances that cover it?
No, not, not, not the number of vehicles.
Right.
But give it a look.
Okay.
But what about using them just for storage?
No, it's just not a permanent scratch here. And there's, there's like four of them like that, that we have outside here.
Because it's getting ridiculous.
But it's not, the one on your, down your end is the only one, is it?
Right.
Right now, there's four of them that I own. So, but I, I got a couple more of them today, and I'll talk to the new chief about some of those. Probably, probably hold on to them then.
Yeah, there's, there's messes. Obviously, they have to be, it's currently registered.
It's, it's basically, I mean, I guess where I'll start is we haven't had anybody, I don't, maybe you guys look at it closely, I do those reports we get from, from...
Republic?
From Republic about delinquencies, you know, or whatever, so whatever numbers are on there, I mean, everybody's supposed to be doing something with reference, so if they're not, if they're delinquent, and Republic isn't picking them up, I mean, they definitely, definitely start, they haven't done that in a long time, you know, probably three years, but they definitely start to see which ones they are picking up, and whether it's a couple of them that you notice, even if there's other ones, they can't, without your permission, they can't be taking their garbage to somewhere, I mean, we got like five people that have got permission to, to take their garbage, their home garbage to work, or their work garbage to home, or they work, they work for a garbage company and they can take their stuff there, but I haven't, I haven't obviously looked at that kind of one, but I got one.
Seems to walk right down the alley and throw it in the neighborhood's garbage cans, that's it, works me out.
Yeah, we haven't done that for a long time, we'll get a little, off character figure out.
Yeah, as far as that property that you were talking about, as I said, I contacted the owner, and we're gonna monitor their, the progress, I guess. He, he was cooperating at that point and said that's just gonna be given, so we'll just gotta wait, give it some time to get rid of the junk and all that other stuff, which we said we were doing, so.
I think a lot of the garbage is being burnt in the front yard in the round container.
It is?
Yeah.
I had a mark.
Okay, so if that's the case, I mean, we've got ordinances against...
We got, we got the ordinance, yeah.
The, the number of cars probably isn't, it is and it isn't depending on, but we don't have a specific number, how determined that number, I don't know, I don't know if we wanna get to that, but I think there's other ways.
Well, I think that they have to be currently registered.
Well, that's the thing, they're not.
Yeah, well, then there's a violation there as well. Unfortunately, we don't have an ordinance that says they have to be currently registered.
Really?
Yes, we don't, we don't, yeah. If it would've been, that wouldn't be much easier if we had an ordinance like that, but we don't.
They need to be changed.
So, so we just don't, it doesn't matter.
But I guess I would, I would have to talk, I thought we did too, I mean, that's...
No, we don't, no. I mean, I look, I pretty much know all the ordinances, and, you know, because I've dealt with those complaints prior, and I looked in there and there is nothing in terms of how many, you know, whether they have to be current on their registration and all that. Even, even the ordinance that we have right now about junk cars is kinda very ambiguous, I would say. It has to be better defined, what we define as a junk vehicle or things like that, so.
Well, I guess, for whatever reason, the current tabs, I mean, we always always covered under the old ordinance, at least that, that's what, that's what the previous city attorney told us, is that...
I mean, if you can show me that ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think she moved...
I looked, I looked at it.
She will send that over to, there's like a different, there's a different section in chapter two, other than where whatever is at, so I'll be out.
Okay, we'll take a look at it, but as I said, I, I looked through over...
It doesn't, it doesn't specifically say exactly the words, you look, you know, it's not black and white, but it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be tailored enough to where it means that.
Okay, if you're gonna show it to me, that, we'll just, that's gonna be much easier to, you know, regulate those issues then, so. Any other questions? Thank you. All right.
Bye, I got not too much, but, see, the trophy case that we're talking about, theft cases in there, the Lions probably made it for doing that, and kind of my father helped it probably next week, we can take trophies that are Henderson associated trophies. Put it in there. Inan, the architect, is supposed to be here sometime tomorrow, are you around at all?
I'm waiting for him to go out.
Okay, oh, well, hopefully, I guess somebody can make this collaborative order, somebody that can show him around and represent him. He live right at that corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see if we can get John Anderson.
Okay. Detective, uh, next month will be the board review, I think you guys have probably all been through that, maybe you're ready with the, so we gotta have this real here for that, and city council right after it, so, and Randy has got his certification, he's up to date, so if, if there's, if there's a couple of you that aren't gonna be here for sure by the time that starts, and I think she's gotta tell me for 6 o'clock, then let me know so that we can make sure we know. So I got, oh, I, yeah, from the bottom, I got that parent thing, Dave, you know, the vans up on Maple Ridge, whenever Dave went there last week, he stepped over and almost lost his thing, and ended up with his, his dog in the middle of the pond, so he decided that it wasn't frozen up, and that he, he's gonna take it different. So he said he probably gets a call, I don't know, he got, oh, his four, I got two calls, so, he must've been, he must've been out there early enough for someone, and they didn't even notice, but, yeah, the guy stands a little bit, he goes, yeah, well, you really kept over like that?
We dropped the gas, you know, the chest come on day, it was just a good trip to watch. We slid on, slid on the small, skidded out of the ice in the middle of the pond, and we just sat there, and we knew it was gonna, and all of a sudden, boom! It was up to here, and we had a hell of a time getting that thing out.
So I got, oh, I got, oh, I did have, it did include, we didn't, we made that off, I guess it's a part of purpose that I think I had in mind, so, we did, we did make that, we sent that proposal to the school district, I and Danny, and met with different people from the school board, the administration staff, and so far, we haven't gotten any negative feedback. The plan being that they're meeting next Tuesday, and there's not a whole lot of glitches or add-ons to the agreement, we're just gonna go ahead and do it, and if that, if that agreement works out, then I'll work right away, I got a baseball board meeting the next time I point to her, I'll work with them and try to get the agreement put together with them, and work forward with that, and probably just send those things out via email, and because our next meeting is scheduled for April, but the ball season will start before, before then, and see what we can put together for financing, you know, whatever, get all the plans and stuff all together, and you got any questions? any questions, just throw them out there when we, we get that part.
Can we just appropriate and move, move ahead and act?
I, I, yeah, I plan on, and, and as long as, if everything stays kinda like it is, I don't know what kind of curveballs, you know?
Sure.
If it was way outside, if it was outside the boundaries of what I, what I think isn't necessarily what we're anticipating, you know, then I don't wanna run, wanna run that by. Yeah, maybe if they say, yeah, yes, or with this, and then we want this, and this, and this, and there's really no money, but just some different liability or exposure type of things, you know, then I'll just say, yeah, we'll figure it out, probably, kind of like Keith or something.
Yeah.
But, but if something totally, uh, totally different that's out there, then, you know, I'll start calling.
All right, so, council reports, anything on the library?
You got, you got, do the trail for me?
Oh.
We gotta do that, definitely, do that.
Yeah, we gotta do that, make that agreement. The, the, in, in order for the, the grant proposals to move forward for the trail on County Route Six, there has to, they, 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 this, the funders are requiring that there be a, uh, an assigned maintenance agreement. County doesn't wanna do it, uh, not, not our intent to perform the maintenance, uh, we have three groups in mind that have already kind of stepped forward and said, if the thing gets funded, if it gets built, we'll take it on, and, uh, but, but they need a governmental entity to be the, be the stakeholder in the, in the maintenance agreement. And the maintenance is gonna be, uh, pretty basic anyway, because the trail that's proposed is unpaved, and the budgets that we've looked at for other, other trails are about twelve hundred dollars a year per mile, which is less than ten thousand dollars, I mean, for all the other things we do in terms of groups maintaining stuff, I mean, the hummingbird ladies have actually, uh, expressed an interest in, and, and leased in part of it, and, uh, the hibernians have actually expressed an interest. I don't think there's any problem, if it came down to the fact that, it, it, it is a county trail, but county is, we're trying to finesse this thing to move forward, so I would appreciate it, if you guys would approve me signing this agreement.
On this, on this regional map, it basically would be from wherever the north end of city limits is, to County Route Five, I think, I think that's your last end that's covered, twenty-two miles.
And, and, and the proposal for the trail is, is to be a, uh, a rock trail, you know, a limestone or whatever, road compact that could even be recycled, uh, they would like to see it paved at some point, but the engineers involved are all saying, don't pave it for five years anyway, so, the, and, and actually, after, if that, if, if it, if it does get paved, the maintenance becomes easier, because all you do is run a brush down it anyways.
I'm hoping wildflowers will get planted along some of the edges.
It's all required, so.
Need a grasses and stuff.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
I'm gonna have to motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion made in second, if all the favor signifies by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made in third. All right, and then we can go to the library, anything for the park board? No?
Park board met, but, uh, we were fine with the...
Yeah, it seems, I mean, Lucy's got a nice plan to put together for, seeing like what's going on here, uh, they're moving forward on Nineteen West, and we talked about this, trails and whatever, uh, I don't know, it seemed like everything was going okay, it's probably, I can tell, nobody, uh, nobody brought anything that I, that was, uh, off the wall or out of the ordinary, or, so, it was, basically, it's like, like, many times it, it ought to be, I mean, it's just, it's really interesting, I'm pretty sure landscape like is gonna look as nice as we've ever looked over the years around here, and up and down Main Street, and, uh, Lucy isn't asking for money, she's not, uh, this or that or the other, I mean, she's basically, seems like she's got a plan on to, to do some things, that, well, in fact, we're saving money, in one sense, in that, in the sector where we got a mother, if that's, in the past, we typically, they'd ask for a whole of wood chips or more, and we brought in and dumped them all year, and they picked them wherever, she said those were all, um, nasty, you know, even the old wood chips, and we all, this, and we all, whatever, so, uh, so, exactly, but, well, then you got a lot of other trucks, and, uh, something else, you know.
Playground should be good for this year.
Yeah.
Unless, unless we, unless we put that equipment in, we end up having to take a bunch of hours, or, or, yeah, that, that might be the only thing, you know, that's...
Well, I, I guess, we'll go with, uh, Marshall.
Right, yeah, yeah, we'll have to see. Supposed to fit, uh, playground guy, when we bought the equipment, and they developed it, it's supposed to fit in whatever we got, you know, so, plus for some reason, we got a, we got a lot of good engineering, but now, I, I mean, they might, they might decide that, uh, something's gotta be modified, look at that, so, we'll have to see.
Speaking of the playground, my wife said, uh, I haven't looked at the basketball hoop, she says, it's up the way to buy for kids, is there a reason it's that high, or is there a way, I never looked at it.
No idea.
To lower it down some.
Sure we can.
Yeah.
Sure we can, if we put a second hoop up or something.
Financial?
Uh, like, cash flow, it's here by eighty-six, seven, and one ninety-nine, two hundred after, bills are paid, uh, Randy and Amy have, we're actually, and we're caught up here now, it's pretty comfortable with the other month balance of a hundred and eighteen, seven ninety-three, ten, and then I've got a cash flow in there, still, showed us about seven hundred and forty-five thousand by the end of the year, uh, and the bills are here, my four o'clock today, the final deadline for the audit came in, so, we're starting to work on that, it'll be, he'll be here at the April meeting to make the audit presentation, uh, probably back on the other report, and we'll put that cap, you know, whatever, all in here, but, um, the, uh, the corporate money, we, we did get a definition or whatever on here, I don't, I would do a put that in here, I nearly forgot about it, what happened?
It's in here, yeah.
That, that's basically the summary, they're actually starting to get now, organize, they're sending out email, writing them out, uh, so that, uh, whatever we've got now, they've already got for this, this year in the budget, there's a resolution that's out there, some cities are passing, but, no, actually, a new thing from Department of Treasury came out, said there's gonna be another seminar on March twenty-one, but they will wait for that, and April will have whatever resolution they have, that we have to pass, basically, it's a standard, that's a resolution that everybody, you, you just follow, but, we do have to have some reports in by April thirtieth, so, just of this year, but what exactly are gonna say, I, for the few people that think they know, but I don't, I don't think anybody does, because we, as, as, for me, they all, all they're just to, uh, to do that, but, it's, the, the Department of US Department of Treasury, remember, it's when we get in a room from place, or, but, the money, all of this, all of this year with that report about the logistics we are buying, we got about one twenty, we got, this is a, this is real, but we didn't get this year.
I'm throwing it in.
So, uh, could you, what he says in here somewhere?
Yes.
What's that?
It's in, we know that.
Right here. Uh, so far, we got forty-nine thousand, two oh four ninety-two, the first distribution, sixteen eleven thirty-three, the second one, and then we'll get another fifty thousand, eight sixteen twenty-five, summer twenty-two, it's, so, all that, forty-nine-two and sixteen-hundred, last year, we spent that on, some of that on the updated, with that updated file system, and the rest, and some of it went to, uh, whatever street stuff we paid Amy, not, not the, not the, we don't know street one, but whatever we paid them for, added repairs, uh, came, came on, came on there, that's, that's whatever the state gave us for streets out, so, what, you know, Steve was talking about this, Randy a little bit, but, uh, what I'm hoping we can do, you know, if you wanna spend this year, you can, but what I'm hoping you can do is save that up, which would probably be another fifty thousand this year, and there's probably thirty or twenty-something in there, so seventy, plus, last year, the state gave twenty-five thousand for supposed to go for street stuff, which would make that ninety-five, I haven't, they're gonna, we'll at least get that for two thousand and twenty-two, it's just a matter of, if, uh, if nobody's, nobody's said, well, they're gonna do the surplus here from Minnesota, so, I would, I would think some's gonna come to the states, you know, so, that would probably put you at a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, which would, which, that would allow you to do, like, probably three pretty decent streets or four, you know, to, to get, to get, to get that done, rather than, uh, and, but I think the toll you took last year, three might not be right, it may have to be, I think you wanna do it with a hundred, a hundred, a hundred thousand, you can directly negotiate with me, or Jason, or, or whoever, and, uh, you know, and, and work it through that way, you know, so, uh, but, uh, and, and, you know, so if you think about it, like, it's probably, I think, either ten blocks that have to be done, and we have to, and the water project actually is moving, that's another twelve blocks, I think, to me, so, that shouldn't, you know, plus what we did with the sewer project, there shouldn't be too much left, or than, like, two thousand, twenty-five, or twenty-six, that, that hasn't, that hasn't at least been, that hasn't been touched, you know, so, which is, they're better off than where we were, but, I mean, it wasn't, when we got done with the hundred and eighty-three project, I mean, that, that would turn into a year, ten year project too, I mean, when we got done with that, pretty much actually, most of the speaks, while, while we did, we did rebuild them, which I think you should, with this one, I mean, they all, they all either got an overlay, or they got, uh, they got at least a little section ripped out, and then put together, so.
All right.
They all look okay to me.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, if all the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made in third.
How about you get back to, uh, approving those monthly reports, do like we like done in the past, until last year, so I think Randy, any signs of...
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Motion made in second, if all the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made in third. Holy goodness! What is the R C P F?
That's that Brian, Brian standing, I gather it was here.
Oh, yeah, it was, what do you, what do you want, a thousand dollars?
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
Civil toll.
Civil toll, okay.
I, I, I put a copy of the letter back in there, again, and...
Do we know what the other tolls are doing?
Put it off for a month, yeah, well, that's all.
Yeah, table is for a month.
See if, see if, see if, what the other cities are doing. Ah, utility rates, fifteen dollar a year, increase effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, and this is, the intention is to build towards the comprehensive water project, without slamming it down all at once, plus, the advice we got from Senator Newman was, when we do go for funding, if we have started to build a surplus in that fashion, they'll look fa, more favorably upon us, and it makes sense, I think that's what we did with the sewer stuff.
After, after, fact.
After, fact, yeah.
That wasn't, that wasn't free fire, you know?
How much, how much is done? So, I think that should be our, our goal, do we even have to act on it now?
No, you don't, you live nicely, you can stay with it for six months here.
Yeah.
You can wait till after the election, probably.
No, three months before the election.
What?
Yeah.
Well, then, who does the table at a decade definitely? Or, when do you wanna bring it up again?
Well, let's bring it up in September.
Okay, September, it's, it's, I've got Penderby by head, so September, Penderby.
Yeah. Any business?
I'll just report to you that we're doing that burn of those buildings this Saturday.
Right.
Um, we did get consent from all the neighboring property owners, and then people, I would say, in the entire block radius have been served, or have been given, uh, information on it, and what roads are gonna be closed.
It's a pretty easy detour though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just, well, sorry, I missed it. And the water complaints that fall.
And the water complaints, but we did, we also put a notice in what we delivered that we're gonna be using water, so there's a very good chance that it's gonna be discolored, so.
Don't do your laundry on Saturday.
Kind of flush it, so we can have it.
I'm doing, correct.
Depending what, uh, kind of the weather is.
Uh, I suggest, um, fire department just do it.
It's fair, if you're gonna do it, that's okay with you.
Yeah, we'll just have to set up.
Yeah, let's see what the weather does, and, and what you can, what you can do with it, if the, yeah, some of the, some of the coves are opening, you don't wanna...
Right.
You don't wanna do it, and get it, I got, I got those calls about, about, so, and, uh, one address we want, and that, can you remember, uh, oh, uh, here, a gentleman that was here for, uh, the last hearing, the body always present, so, maybe he's already grew a boost, not, uh, a lot, but, oh, the cove that they only put in, to go back there, they only play ultimately, John, Eric, remote play, that's, it was a, it was a small cove, it's thrown in, you know, so, stuff is bagging up in the secret yard, but, uh, so, nothing's coming out on the ground, he's worried about where it's gonna come out, and we went and walked and looked at it, and it looks like it should move back and come in the sweet degree, and just, you know, come out next to that guy down there, but, uh, when I looked on the outlet, uh, there's a little bit of, in that ditch, there's a little bit of junk and stuff in there, I got me thinking about that whole, whole, the whole person, person chair, everything.
The, the way, yeah.
But that was about, that was on a different, that wasn't on that one, was it?
That was, well, I was behind it, I was saying, yeah.
Is that it, did it come out by walk just then?
It came home, that's how we discovered it, it was stinking so bad that, uh, everybody thought it was a sewer plant.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, and, no, it was way being dumped directly in a, in a drought, so that stuff was just oozing down, and it smelled like tote can.
Cause, cause when, when the guy asked for that water, he's always thinking about, this is, this is, did I, did I only walk all the things that I had, and that actually, that actually, the one that that one went in, actually, came behind by, and by Jim Eagle, and came, you know, and went out and know what he means, somehow he entered it all back in there, but this one, this one, when I walked in, that one actually, it's going behind a water tower, but it doesn't come out, uh, next to the top of it there, and somehow, another, another branch, it looks like it goes into, but, uh, I, I don't know where some of that's, I don't know, I don't, I don't think, you know, maybe we won't, how long that stuff has been, or maybe it did roll in, and that could be junk from Free Farmers, you know?
Yeah.
I got one more, like, on the business, but, had, I wrecked that whole family, you know that, you know that, and, uh, I think he's got it worked out, Brad Freeze has got it set up with some other engineering firm, as far as the concrete work up there, I guess, what territorial to my office that the, our building inspector told me, I had, if he wouldn't sign the, uh, permits unless he had an engineer's stamp on it, which, first the engineering firm, or wherever he hooked up, was, was like six grand, and, Brad Freeze, I believe, he's got it lined up, but it's coming in for like, I mean, for twelve hundred dollars, I guess, so I think he'll stop for that.
Well, and, it's gotta have something to inspect, and actually, it sounds like the contractor stirred the pot in the first place.
Right, that's what happens.
Yeah.
Did you talk to Adam?
No, I haven't talked to Adam, I've talked to Boll this morning, but I, you know, and, and actually, a plan might exist somewhere, because... and actually, that plan might exist somewhere, because whoever's bought that kit probably has faced the same situation, and those permit documents are actually public information, so, if they built one in, the one in the sewer column probably has that page filed with, with their building permit application from when they did it, and that page probably exists.
Well, it's supposed to be the state mandate or whatever, that anything over something square feet, floating slab, anything over seven hundred and forty square feet or some damn thing, it was, has to have an engineer, but, you are on, and all the other ones I did, once, they're all on floating slabs, I've been here just to.
Well, they, they will be, that one will be, won't it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a thickened edge, and how much rebar, and how much mesh, and how you make a building, so, it doesn't, and, you know.
Right, I did tell Adam, I said, if it was me, I would have, even though I'm only over an eighteen inch deep, or whatever, footing edge, I says, you know, for a little extra concrete, you know, and for it, I'd go with the concrete tubes, and put occasionally, you know, space them out, and get them down to your frost line, and tie everything together, it's never going to go in here.
Yeah.
But, you know, basically, the, the basic truth is, it's his building, he's responsible with breaks, it's his deal, you know.
Yeah, it's all about the contractor, we're doing more than this, provided with the, with the plan, all right. Any other business?
You got meetings here, like, for the year?
And what is that?
I don't know, you got any more you can add?
Meetings?
You're, the revised meeting schedule.
What about it?
If you need to approve it, yeah.
Well, what is the revised meeting schedule?
Well, it's next month, B.
It's the last page.
Why don't we do this, why can't we, all right.
Because this is what, this is what you posted, and all of that, that means?
Well, yeah, but it's third one, they, you know, they're going to be.
Because I was going to tell you, but you're always maybe doing.
Okay, fine, well.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
One second.
Motion made in second, in all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made in period. Well, we did it, it's an easy term.